Okay. I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the FY 23-24 recommended budget for Monday, June 5th, 2023 at the administrative building here in Danbury, 7:00 PM. The first item on our agenda is the invocation. Commissioner Mendenhall, would you mind doing the invocation for us?
Please stand if you will. Almighty gracious, heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful day today. Lord, we know you're the Creator of all things, and we give you thanks for everything. Father, as we go through this budget session this season, as you will guide and give us wisdom and make the appropriate decisions for our citizens in Stokes County. And Lord, now, as we go forward, we ask for you to give each person a safe journey home. All of these things we ask of them, and by name. Amen.
Next item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion for a motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, approved as printed. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the FY 23-24 recommended budget by the county manager. And so we have four people that are signed up to speak tonight. And so we will start with Matthew Martin.
If you guys don't mind, I have some information. I don't know if we need it, but Glenn Lamb, Captain Smith, and Lieutenant Lamb, they're going to forfeit their time to me, but...
We're not going to be sticklers on time tonight since you're the only ones here, so...
Okay, well, that's even better.
We'll give you enough time to say what you need to say.
Probably need a longer...
But we don't leave at midnight.
Yeah.
You'll be way behind me. Well, like I said, I'm Matthew Martin, deputy fire chief and rescue chief with the Westfield Fire and Rescue. This is our, this is the third step in the budget process for the Fire and Rescue Commission, or excuse me, for the Fire Rescue Budget that is recommended by the Fire Commission. The Westfield Volunteer Fire Department, WVFD, is officially requesting an appeal and amendment to recommend the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. WVFD has met and exceeded the necessary process set forth by the Stokes County Fire and Rescue Association bylaws and the articles of the Fire Commission. We are appealing the recommendation of the Fire Commission of $60,001,43, and asking for $71,846. We feel that the Fire Commission is not taking into consideration the citizens of Stokes County which are protected by WVFD in their decision-making process. This can be proven by the recommendations set forth by the Fire Commission to the other departments of Stokes County outlined in the budget that was presented by county manager on May 22nd, 2023. The documentation provided with this letter shows that the Stokes County Fire Commission is not treating all citizens of Stokes County equally, respectively the members, officers, and board of directors of the Westfield Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department submitted by myself. I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the Fire Commission's plan and what has been recommended. The major thing that has been recommended is debt payout, the $300 million of debt in three years, which is great, you know, if that applied across the board. But also, with the gentlemen in the room here, you know, we're all know that a fire rescue department is never going to be debt-free. There's necessary debt, and then there's unnecessary debt. And one issue with the recommendation here is there has not been a plan set forth on how are we going to stay out of unnecessary debt? You know, how are we going to make smart decisions going forward so after this three years, you know, we're not another $3 million, $4 million? You know, fire trucks, you know, like everything else, they're increasing in price. A lot of the debt load that's being paid off are just trucks that are eight, nine, 10 years old, and we're still paying for that debt. So if you buy a truck today, you know, think about what the increase in that's going to be. And just for an example, on the, on the third page here, it shows the, the fire departments that are going to have their debt eliminated. Those fire departments will also receive $165,000 for operations and staffing. Then the second half is the fire departments who are not getting their, their debts paid off this year, but they are still receiving annual payments for their debt in addition to $165,000. So really, you know, the only folks that are hurting here is Westfield Fire Department and the two other fire departments that their buildings are in Surrey County, but they still serve citizens of Stokes County. And then you can see that Westfield Fire District is not getting any debt relief and no annual payments. Right now, we have two annual payments. We maintain a truck payment that's ongoing. So every five years, we pay a truck off, then we replace a truck. In a fleet of eight trucks, that gets 25, 30 years of a truck, and then it's, then it's time to go. And then we did a remodel to the station back during the COVID, and we got that bill unpaid. So those are the only two debts that we, that we maintain, and we're not getting any relief from Stokes County on that. The next couple of pages are just the communications from the Fire Commission to prove that we did, you know, go through the appeal process and all that, and this is the next and final process in the appeal process. I just wanted to give a couple of quick facts about Westfield Fire Department, because there's a lot of misconception on Westfield Fire Department and just how much of Stokes County does Westfield Fire Department cover. First and foremost, we are going to celebrate our 60 years this year. That's 60 years of service to the citizens of Stokes County also. Our charter members, out of 19 charter members, 11 were Stokes County citizens, all right? We're located right on the Surrey County, Stokes County line. We're less than 700 feet from the Stokes County line. Our total district is 46 square miles. 17.45 square miles is in Stokes County, roughly 42%. And that's what we base all our budgeting on, is we, we get, we budget 58% with Surrey County funds and 42% with Stokes County funds. We serve roughly 3,600 citizens. We're ISO rated five fire department. We're a certified light rescue squad. We're a certified medical responder unit. We have 29 active members. Six of those members are advanced certified firefighters. 13 are certified firefighters. 11 are certified technical rescue technicians. Eight are emergency medical technicians. Five are North Carolina medical responders. Eight members of, eight of the 11 technical rescuers have multiple disciplines, defined space, wilderness, and structural collapse and whatnot. And then we have 20 members who are certified as emergency vehicle drivers. The charts on the next page kind of shows the five-year trend of what the Stokes County budget has been for us. We'll start, five years ago, it was 69,000, then it went down to 67, and it maintained 67 for three years, and then last year was 69. The recommended budget for this year is 60,000, and that is a 14,000, or excuse me, a 14% decrease from last year. The next chart shows the revenue from fire tax over the past five years. And you will see from 2018 till the end of this fiscal year, the revenue generated by fire tax has increased by 19%. And so that really is not a concern as to why we're getting a decrease, because our revenue has actually gone up almost, close to half a million dollars in five years. Then on the final page is the number of calls that we've ran in Stokes County over the past five years, and the number of calls we've run as an organization in both Surrey and Stokes County. One thing that I would like to, to mention in our Surrey County budget process, our fire district gets the money that it generates. So there is no Fire Commission, there's no, you know, standing in front of the board of commissioners. If, if we, if our tax rate is 9.2 cents in Stokes, or Surrey County, what our fire district generates, that 9.2 cent comes to us. Here in Stokes County, the tax rate is eight cent, and then that money goes into a service pot, and then it's divvied out, okay? One reason why our tax rate in Surrey County is higher is we got to compensate for where Stokes County lacks in, in the funding, the 42%. So I thought about bringing a busload of Surrey County citizens up here to, you know, talk about why are we paying more, you know, to cover, but, you know, we'll, we'll address that the other day. But that was my appeal. If, I don't know if this is question and answer time or how this works, but...
Yeah, we have the board ask any questions they have. Do you have, is that, you have anything else?
Now, that's, that's it in the packet.
Go ahead, Keith.
I found that, why is the truck replaced every five years?
Our trucks are not replaced every five years. We, what we do, if, say we buy, we rotate. So we buy an engine this year, that engine's going to be in service for at least 30 years.
Okay.
But then we have a tanker, but we pay our trucks, we do our truck loans on five-year periods. We can't, we don't stretch them out 10 years or 15 years, because it just, that you get into debt trouble that way. And then you have old trucks that you can't maintain that you're still paying on.
Any other questions? If you got any other questions.
I do not.
I don't think so. I'm still reading through some of this, but...
Brad, you have comments, questions?
So if this, if this stands with the recommendation from the Fire Commission, what do you draw from? Do you have a reserve that you can pull from, or what, what would be, what are the ramifications?
Well, just, that's the unknown. And the reason that's the unknown is we don't know what our truck maintenance is going to be like for the next 12 months. We don't know what fuel's going to do. So, so we don't really know the implications. We do know that we're going to have to, you know, tighten some things, you know, maybe cut some service, cut the, you know, cut a number, you know, instead of sending three trucks, cut back to two, maybe hoping for, you know, one more year on a set of tires. But we, we just don't know. We've not faced that yet. I will say that, and I should have put that number in here, our truck maintenance for the past five years, we, we were spending 8,000, and this year we're over 20,000. You know, just, just one, one truck went down a month ago and needed an oil pump, and that was a $5,600 fix, you know? So you guys know the, the inflation and what things cost to get fixed. We're, we're not immune to that. And usually, if something's painted red with Gold Leaf on it, there's an extra charge.
You know, I'm sure you probably do, but you know off the top of your head, like, how many Stokes County residents or volunteers active?
We have 10? All three of us, it's close to 10, or out of the 29 are Stokes County residents.
Commissioner Mendenhall?
I have to quickly glance through this. Just give me a second.
Okay. I have, I have a question. It's kind of a general question, not specifically on the data you presented. Maybe Stephen, you might want to join in on this answer as well. But maybe I'm oversimplifying this. I understand that fire districts have nothing to do with county borders or city borders, right? They're just set up based on distances and a whole different set of criteria.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of calculations. The county commission actually, the county commissioners actually set the district lines, but obviously, you're, for Stokes County, for any fire district that has, any department has a district up until the county line where it reaches the county line.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but they do, it is common to cross county borders.
But you have, in order to gain the efficiency and the insurance ratings and stuff, you have to do that, right?
It is, that is the best...
I mean, the most efficient way you do it.
Yes, most efficient, best practice to do that. That's why it is allowed.
Okay.
For example, we, I'm sorry, we, we have a district in Forsyth County, just do our proximity to Forsyth County.
So is it, I should know this already from doing all this stuff so long, but I don't. Is it, so is the philosophy, say, by the state or the state fire marshal? You can stand close to that microphone, count it.
Yes, sir.
Is it, if the budget follows where the work gets done? You see what I'm saying? I don't know how to ask.
Yeah, they, they would not have, they would, the state fire marshal's officer, anything as far as the district line, they're not going to have an opinion of how the funding mechanism works.
Is there any, do you know, is there any statutes or guidance or anything about one county government paying, paying for fire service from another county? I mean, it's just...
No, there's, the only statutes that I'm aware...
No restrictions or anything?
No, there's, there's no restrictions as, as far as equality. Now, maybe, I think that's kind of where you're, as far as, you know, district percentage equality, there's nothing, the only thing that's regulated is if it's a, for, if it's a tax late for fire service district, that the money has to be used for that. It can't be used for anything else. But as far as equity, tax equity, there's no stipulations on that that I'm aware of.
But the system's set up basically for all these elected officials just to figure this out and work it out between them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That was my gentleman.
And one other thing, the reason Surrey County is set up that way, that's what the citizens voted for. The reason Stokes County is set up this way, this is what the citizens voted for. Outside of the City of King, the town of Wana Cove, and Rule Hall, those citizens in that respective areas voted for the fire tax model that it goes to the service district or the fire district that serves that community.
Mm-hmm. We can, it sounds like we sort of have two different systems. We're trying to interface and make them work together, basically.
Yes, and Stokes Rockingham is similar to Westfield Fire Department. In Rockingham County portion, they have their independent tax district, as the chief described, and then they are funded through the service district in Stokes County.
Okay.
And that, and, you know, just the history for the folks, the reason the, this is set up this way, if you take the northwest portion of Stokes County where it's all farmland rule, and then you take King where the population is, you know, King's budget is more than the rest of the county's budget, you know, because that's where the population is, if you take where the steam station is. And that generates a lot of revenue. So the fire district that protects that would get a tremendous amount of money, and then the rural areas would either have to pay the max 15 cents per hundred, or, you know, they're, they're, you know, running on $100,000 or barbecue chickens or, you know, whatever that it used to be. So that's kind of the history of why Stokes County was like that, is because we had a couple of areas that were generating a lot of revenue, and then you had the more rural areas that were just strictly farmland weren't generating. And there is a baseline service that has to be provided that costs, you know, a certain amount.
But is Rockingham, Surrey, Forsyth, all, are we the only one with a service district? And the rest of them have the other system?
So, yeah, our surrounding, I'm not sure about Yakim, but the three surrounding is they are all service district oriented, and the chief illustrated it very well. I, you know, is it time to, to look at something different compared to when the eighties, when it was put in place?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe so, because, I mean, the county's changed, you know, from that standpoint. But all our surrounding counties are independent service districts.
Okay, okay. One last question I have is, what's, what's, how do you guys do paid firemen, and what's the availability of responders during the daytime?
We...
How's that work for you versus...
We run a, a part-time program where we're off-duty employees from other municipalities, they come up and work a shift, you know, eight to five, 12 to eight. And then we also do an internal incentive program. So for the, for our members, as you can see, we, we've got some well-trained members. So for the ones that meet the qualifications, they come and work four-hour or eight-hour blocks, you know, checking off trucks, maintaining the building, maintaining equipment, responding to calls, you know, so, and then also, we're fortunate at this time, but it ebbs and flows. We're fortunate this time that we have five folks that work from home in the fire district. You know, you're looking at three of them. So, so we're working at home, tongs drop, you know, we go to the fire station, pick up a truck, if we're not doing our work from home from the fire station. So it kind of ebbs and flows, you know, not every year's like that, not every 10 years is like that, but that's kind of how we're, we're doing it right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mendenhall, you got it?
Now, I'm pretty, I understand exactly what you said.
Okay.
And just for clarification of, you know, well, how did you come up with 71,000? Like I said, our, our tax rate in Surrey County is 9.2 cents. If we applied 9.2 cents, so every citizen quote-unquote is paying the same, that would generate 71,000 roughly. So that's how we, that's how we came up with, you know, that's our method behind the madness. And, and if we knew that, that we were getting, you know, a set amount every year, it makes our budget process, you know, tremendously easier, you know? It's the unknown. We can't budget if we, you know, if we're trying to figure out where $11,000 is or is not coming from.
Okay, great. Son, you got another question?
Yeah, one thing I was looking at is that the other fire departments are getting the 165, 120.
Mm-hmm.
And if you did take 42% of that, because you serve 42% of Stokes...
Right.
That would equal 69,350.
Correct.
Which sounds a lot more, I mean, I know that's not quite 71, what you requested, but it still makes sense to me.
It would be equal, other than the, the debt, you know, the annual payments and stuff.
Right.
But it would be an equal operations fund.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I, that's my comment.
Okay.
That would be equal and fair.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. Does anybody have any other comments? Otherwise, go ahead.
Just, just goes back to, and we appreciate, you know, what our state senator, you know, gave to, to our volunteer fire departments earlier in the year in terms of grants. But it just, and I'm guessing that the only reason that, that y'all didn't get the grant like all the other volunteer fire departments did was that you didn't have a physical station, physical building, I guess, in Stokes County. And that, I mean, and I appreciate all the money that, that, that we did get dispatched during grants, but it just, I don't think it's fair to the citizens that live in that part of Stokes County. Going through the, the fire department, obviously, because it affects how, you know, your, you could, it would be a more effective operation with that, with that additional grant money that should have came to that station. I know we're going to be having further discussions as, as we go on in terms of volunteer fire departments and operations. Stokes County is not any different than any other county here in, in the state and probably even the country. We're having a hard time during the day getting people to respond. So I think that'll come into play with, with the bigger picture, but one of the things we have to try to make sure is that recognition is given to all the fire departments, not necessarily, we have to find a way, just because a physical building isn't in Stokes County, that, that y'all are being left, left out, and then we've got to try and go back and correct, to correct the money part of it.
See, I don't think Joy serves Surrey, does she? She's not now. Yeah, so that's probably part of the issue too with the grant fund. That's a good presentation you gave, gave us, and, and we will, and we'll take it seriously and, and deliberate on it during our budget process here, and you'll get a clear answer out of the budget that we approve.
Well, thank you. And the invitation is still open for everybody here to come to Westfield and, and see, because I think over the years, folks just, they weren't sure, you know, just how much Westfield had in, in Stokes County. Then also, we'll be celebrating our 60th anniversary in August, and we look forward to you guys being there for that as well.
I got a tour, it's your, it's your station house, and it's, it's in good shape, it's organized, so kudos to all y'all.
All right, thank you guys for coming, and we appreciate it. I think that's our only speakers now, so...
Does Stephen want to say something else?
Do what?
Does Stephen want to say something else?
Are you here for some other reasons, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He's here for Keith.
I thought you, you gave him your time.
He gave you a chance to talk.
He's going to put his king hat on.
Yeah, I'm going to put, I'm going to put my king hat on.
I thought you just heard donate time.
Well, yeah. Three meetings I had to be at tonight, I made two of them, so that'll be all right. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of y'all. I am here tonight representing the city council in the City of King, asking for your consideration on a half-cent fire tax increase for the King Fire District that is outside of the corporate limits of the City of King in Stokes County. The request is for assistance in hiring additional, for additional staffing. King is, as you can see, is growing, but also on the county portion, it is growing. There's a large neighborhood going up on Highway 66, a lot of the, any bit of land that's available, they're putting a house on. And we are seeing increased call volume, and the, from what we can gather, the population that is moving up is moving into, out of the hustle and bustle of the big city, but to an environment that is close to amenities and services, and, and really volunteering is just not in their nature, because it wasn't something, they came from an area where they couldn't volunteer, especially for the fire service. They could volunteer in civic clubs, recreation leagues, such as that, but volunteering for the fire service. Also, the demand, as the chief mentioned earlier, on being a volunteer is increasingly growing. Training demands, jobs are not in Stokes County like they were previously, they're outsourcing. I was hoping maybe the, a lot of these work-from-home positions may have some interest in volunteering, but we, we really haven't gotten that from, any interest from that. The half-cent increase that we're requesting, again, would augment or help us fill two new positions. It would not fully fund it, it would just be a small portion. Rough calculations is about $25,000 is what that half-cent would bring if, if it were to be awarded and approved. We are also have asked Forsyth County to have an equivalent tax rate of what would be eight and a half cents, because that would be what we're asking for here. Their manager has recommended it, and it is in front of their council. They are looking at, according to them, adoption of their budget this week sometime. So they are in favor of this. So we just ask that you consider that proposal for the half-cent fire tax increase for those reasons. We have seen dramatic call volume with very little interest in, in volunteering. We are, I grew up, my grandfather, my father were firefighters within the organization. I was running around there as a young one. And so it's a, it's a, it's a difficult transition for me, but it's, it's, it's going to happen. I'm not going to stop it. King is growing, the county's growing, and with that, we have to, my job now is to make sure that the people that live in the city and commute and do business in the city have the best protection as possible and affordable, and that is through increase in our staffing level. Right now, we're currently staffed at six people per day. We have three administrative positions. This would bring us up to seven per day. Obviously, we would not be that every day because of sick, vacation, training. Last year, we ran 2,515 calls. Probably, I was trying to pull the data up, but my service wasn't great. We, we probably had 700, 800 of those just in the areas within Stokes County of the King Fire District's tax district in Stokes County. Another thing is, you know, the lack of volunteers throughout the county. We are traveling to our, and helping our neighbor departments more and more due to just unavailability, or they don't have enough manpower, as the chief talked about. They don't have enough manpower for labor-intensive calls. So in the county as a whole, we are going further out in the county than we have ever been with the six department dispatch. We, we could be in Danbury, depending on the location. We're, we're traveling farther north, east into Wana Cove areas, and that's also causing a burden or somewhat of a tax on us, because 25% of our calls equate to there's no available, we're not, we can't handle another call, there's nobody else to respond. And that 25%, that means the other departments around us are...
that means the other departments around us are tied up too. So that makes a, like a double indemnity, those twenty-five percent are calls that it's, all the departments in that area are on those calls. So that is my presentation and ask for y'all to consider during this budget, I know a tax increase is not an easy decision to make, I can say that we did lower our ISO rating several years ago, and we're a three, and the increase we're asking would still put savings into the homeowner. The, the half-cent that we're asking, a homeowner still would be having savings based on that low insurance rating of a three. I'll be glad to entertain any questions if you have.
Okay, well, there's questions? Okay, fire one.
So with, especially the, the last part you talked about, about going farther, farther out into the county,
Yes, sir.
and then a lot of the other fire stations are tired up, or, you know, tied up, and they just can't, you know, they can't respond, so you guys are coming, and I think that's, I think that's great, but it, it comes into play to a bigger picture that, and, and we'll be, hopefully, we'll be sitting down and addressing this, you know, sometime before July first. But I think it, it comes down to, you know, we, we had one presentation probably back in January from the fire marshal's office, just to try to get us to where, you know, we had a quick response in the county, and then, you know, we had, we had some kind of conflict to where it wasn't really hashed out, I guess, in full, according, you know, to some people. So then, you know, I was told that, that, you know, we were going to have another plan that would be recommended to the board. The last time I heard, they were going to try to set up a time with Amber to come and talk to us. I mean, I'm not against the, the half-cent tax, but
Yes, sir.
I think that, I think if we could just sit down and figure out, and whatever we need to do, because, I mean, certainly, if, you know, if, if we look to give, you know, your service district a half-cent tax, well, we got other fire stations in the county too, that, you know, that, that I'm sure would, would want the extra money, but my biggest thing is this. I don't, I don't mind, personally, I don't mind paying the taxes as, as a homeowner, and I, and we got to help public safety. Fire, EMS, police, I support it one hundred percent. But I just want to do it one time, I, I would like to get together and let's find out what's the best way to move forward as the county instead of piecemealing
Yes, sir.
everything together, and that's just my opinion.
And, and I have been vocal from, I, I wanted to, I volunteer also with the Sawyer Town Fire Department, I, I do that also, so I, I understand, and that's the reason I do volunteer, is because I know they need help, so when I, on my off time, I, I respond with them when I'm available. And I have been in meetings, as part of the fire services along with Westfield, about the response trucks and plans and as far as that goes. I'm in favor of a response truck, I think it's a stopgap move that will buy us a little bit of time, maybe even during the planning stages of it. I operated off of the response truck here in the county in the early two thousands, it made a difference. And the next step then was to look at getting people in the fire stations and get the fire trucks on the road. So I, I, I think constructive planning and, and discussion is, is the right move forward. You know, just right now, for what, you know, it's kind of like I said, with the Trump being a stopgap, I mean, we, right now, we, you know, this is where we're at to, to, in needing this half-cent tax increase to help with staffing, is, is to just, you know, make it safe to operate, have the people there and the staff in there to safely operate.
So if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you said so the total amount of money that you're talking about is twenty-five thousand dollars?
It's approximately, you know, rough math, making, I don't, you know, collection rates and all that, but roughly it's twenty-five thousand dollars of the property tax, the law of tax, to raise it from eight, where we're currently at, to eight and a half, and honestly, I cannot, it's been a considerable amount of time. Matter of fact, I don't, the last fire tax increase, I don't think we requested it, I don't, it was, it was, there was a three-year plan that we raised incrementally, Mr. Moore, Chairman Morris may remember that. But I, I, we didn't request it, it was just, we were blessed to get it, I'll just leave it at that.
I think that, like I said, we probably need more than, I, I, I just want a plan, I, I, I just hate, I, I just hate flying, I'm not saying you're flying by the seat of your pants, I mean, you're, you know, you're coming with facts, and, but I'm talking about countywide. It just seems like we know what the issues are, but we're not meeting, and we're not talking,
Right.
and we're not planning, and unless we can get some people in a room, and, you know, the, the benefit of a voluntary fire department is because, you know, you've got the family culture, and you've got the people that, that want to do right, but, but I'll tell you the negative part of it, is there's too many chiefs, and, and everybody has their little sandbox, and to where, you know, like with the King Fire Department, you got one chief, and you make the calls. When it comes down to, hey, I want to do this, well, no, I want to do that from, say, you know, to your battalion commanders, you say, I hear you, but this is what, you know, this is what we're going to do. And we have a lot of chiefs here in Stokes County, and so it's, we need all get together, and we need just to talk about it, because it's not going to be a simple solution, it's going to be give and take, but we got to start talking, and we got to come up with a plan, because things aren't getting any better.
It, it may be advantageous to reach out to Manager Watts in Forsyth County. Five or six years ago, they did a, they hired a consultant to focus solely on what you're talking about. Reason I say reach out to him, there, it may not be worth it, we may have smart enough individuals in our own county to do it, but sometimes that outside, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of it or not, but it may be worth it to see if they got the results they wanted to, and he's close and has relationships with Stokes County, it may be worth reaching out to him to ask.
I mean, that's fine, but I
I, I agree.
One last final comment is this, I appreciate you coming here tonight, and, and I appreciate you standing up there and, and, and asking for the half-cent tax increase, and appreciate, you know, the, explaining everything, because I've been waiting for several months now for somebody from the Fire Chiefs Association to come up here and talk. So thank you
Oh, no, thank you.
for coming up.
Reach out to me anytime, any, any of you.
Commissioner Menon Hall, you got it?
I was going to say, if you ever need a catcher and a pitch.
I was wondering if I was going to come up?
Call him, because he, uh, he was my catcher when I coached at South Stokes Baseball in the nineties, and he let me down one time, we was playing East Forsyth, and he somehow magically got hurt over the weekend, and I had to catch Jimmy Boils, and we lost the game, so Steve, I never forgot that.
Yes, sir. I've never come to meet him, he's been a commissioner that
I think Commissioner Menon Hall is going to give you a payback.
Yes, sir.
But he just won't vote.
He knows that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Keith, you got anything?
No, I just appreciate what all of you do, I do think we have a problem of communication. I'm hearing some stuff that just, if it gets out in the public, it's not going to help any of y'all's image. And I'm going to leave it at that, just watch how you spend money, because a lot of people's watching. And, and I appreciate the job you're doing, I think a major problem we're going to have is, this is not going to go away, because I don't care what study Joe Blow does, this county's growing. King has exploded to the point, I don't know if you'll ever catch up.
You're right, that, yes.
You better, you better be talking to the city of King about building another fire station
We, we
in our future.
We have had discussions over the years of that, yes, sir.
Anyway, great job, and, and I appreciate you coming too, because nobody else is knocking on doors down.
Well, thank you.
Hammer, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly say that two of the fire chiefs are going to come to the June twelfth, our regular meeting as an agenda item, and have that conversation, which you were talking about, yeah, on behalf of all the fire chiefs.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, I think you're not telling me anything I don't see every day in King as far as how it's growing, and I know that has to increase your number of calls exponentially, because I, I can sit at our shop now and try to pull out any time of the day, any time, it doesn't matter if it's morning, noon, or evening, and count twenty or thirty cars before I can pull out. I mean, it's just, you sit, and you sit, and you sit, and you sit, and you count, and you wait, and you, and it's unbelievable how much it's, it's increased, probably just in the past year and a half, really.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, everywhere you see these housing developments going up, and you're right, there, it's not a generational thing even now where people volunteer.
Right.
You know, it's just not, and I really wish our firefighter program in the schools had been able to take off, I think that was a really good thing, and I, I just hate we can't find an instructor that certified
Give me a few more years, I got a few more years before I can retire, I'd love to do it, honestly, I really would, talk Doug Rose that, I'd love to do it.
Hey, you're being recorded.
I'm very open about that, I would love to do it in a couple of years.
That, that program is so beneficial, and I, I really hope we could get that back, because I think growing our own firefighters is, is huge, really, that they could finish high school and be qualified to be a volunteer with everything they, they need, and go on to get
Yes, ma'am.
other fire training, that's just great, but yeah, thanks for coming and sharing all this information, all of you. You know, you don't know what you don't know, and everything we've got is good information.
I, I definitely will make it a more of a conscious effort to send you some, you know, occasional reports, so you can just see the data and what's going on, events and stuff like that, I will do a better job of that.
Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Appreciate it. Only question I have is, did the board down there in Forsyth approve the half-cent, or is it just recommended?
Right, so they're having their public meeting tonight as well, so we had our city council meeting, and then the public, this public, and so
You mean Forsyth Board I'm talking about?
Yeah, right, they're public, so they, it is being recommended by Manager Watts, so
And approved, yeah.
No, that, my understanding, they're
Probably not done yet, right?
Their Thursday is their projected budget approval day, is Thursday of this week, is when, according to
By next week, then?
Yeah, according to, yeah, well, I'll know something should unless something happens by next week. Yes, I will pass that along as soon as I hear back.
Yep.
Thank you guys for coming, both from Westfield and, and Stephen also, we appreciate it. Do the board have any other questions or comments you want to make before we adjourn? Get a motion to adjourn then?
Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
If they ever say aye, ayes, okay, we adjourn.